Good. This is birthday since yesterday. And then seventy-six. So.
I was talking to Coach.
That gets you to take the sports because he wants them to drive.
Coach is obsessed with it. Coach is obsessed with it.
It's a great spot over there. Don't we all want a new driver?
That would make the thing easier.
Well. I'm here forever. Now, obviously, they had a bad ass network down there. You just. So I don't know if it works.
I'd say right now, if there's anything like.
I just want to have an idea as to going.
That's okay. I don't think it's system.
Sure.
Like.
Would you first watch that in one game?
The first one up. And then the rest of the way.
So. Okay, fine. I can deal with this picture. The moment I grew up on it, looked bad. You know.
Come on, Karen, get comfortable.
Yeah.
How's that, Dad?
Somewhere, somewhere warm and sunny.
That's. Here. Hey.
I cannot translate.
Well, I know.
A lot of words.
I think it's just scary.
I'm about halfway through.
Yeah. Cut this as a. Thank you. I want to speak, but.
Public comment section is early in the agenda, so.
Okay.
Offer.
Hey.
Nobody on.
All right, sounds good. Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Auburn City Council meeting for the first meeting in June. I call you into order and ask for any agenda addition or group all agenda. I guess the first thing would be that we're taking off item E one and G one. But. No bids. Get that out there. No bids on that public board side at this time. Try it one more time. We'll figure it out for a while, so.
With that amendment, I would move approval of the agenda.
Second. Moving second to approve the agenda with one adjustment. And all in favor, the motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we go to communications and anybody who wants to address the city council on subjects pertaining to today's meeting agenda, please wait until that item comes up. And if you wish to cross the city council on an item not on the agenda, please close the microphone, identify yourself, what name and address, and we've got up to five minutes, so let's follow. I think you just need to hit the button on the speaker there. Tell it goes right through.
Thank you for allowing me to speak in Iowa. It's a privilege and a right to speak at the city council. I'm here about two things. And I did send in some pictures, but they may not be available.
We got like six tents afternoon.
Okay. The first is the city seems unaware that there's a killer vine impacting city trees in nature park along the creek. And who knows where else? It's called bittersweet. And it's been allowed to grow on city trees and no one cuts it. And I don't know once you cut it, I think you'd have to talk to the state about how to poison it. But it can kill trees through its weight on branches. And it grows up around the crown and blocks the sunlight from the leaves. I sent in three photographs in nature park. It's easy to find trees affected. But the city's not doing anything about it, so I'm here to raise the issue so maybe somebody will take action. The second issue is the state of the quarry after the contractor left. The main, they created a main road about three, four, five vehicles wide up here and that goes down to the quarry. There's no seating. There's no erosion control. That road is heavily packed because of the way of the machinery. They also, at the bottom of that road over here, there is a huge debris dump in the water. If we estimate the water depth at ten feet, I would say that debris field is about fourteen feet high. In the water, rock, dirt, dead trees and bushes have been left. Also on the island, there's room, they had taken down some trees for the solar panels for the new project. But they also removed, or somebody removed a lot of trees on the north side, which has nothing to do with the solar panels. In addition, the city brought in multiple truckloads of dirt, I think from the Highway thirty ambulance area. Because I noticed that level's down. But once it was brought in, where is it now? They didn't take it back out. So I think it's on the bottom of the quarry or in that debris pile. So I hope that the city quickly, before it's supposed to rain tomorrow, puts in some erosion control because it's a very steep decline right into the water. There's some big rocks there, but that's not going to hold anything back. And the city once was alerted to the problems of erosion control, but I think it's been forgotten. And I would hope that the city would look at that debris pile. I don't know, I'm not a water expert, what impact it has on the quarry water. I recommend you for trying to prove the water quality there. But it's a mess. And I hope the city addresses those factors. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. You'll get those two points. Anybody else here speak anything out of the agenda? Any? And we'll go to technical communications with Mr. Rain, from the two of us coming to the solid waste agency. All right, all of you are up. Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me back. I appreciate it. I'm Joe Grady, the deputy director for the solid waste agency here for annual update on services, programs. This year I'll have an update about landfill capacity, talking about where things are at on our county home roads. So to brief history of the agency, we formed back in nineteen ninety-four when the city of Cedar Rapids and Lynn County combined under a twenty-eight E agreement. So we're not the city, we're not the county, we're a standalone agency. We do have a nine-member board of directors with officials, six officials from the city of Cedar Rapids, two Lynn County supervisors, Brandy Byneshead and Sammy Sheets, and then we have one appointee from the city of Marion. And I always try to remind folks that we do not receive any taxpayer dollars. All of our services and programs are all funded by our landfill tipping fees. So I'll jump right into that. For FY twenty-six coming up here, our tipping fee is going to go up a little bit. Currently forty-eight dollars per ton. It is going to go to fifty dollars per ton on July first. But all of our minimum fees for residential vehicles are going to stay the same. So if you're in a car, it's twelve dollars per ton. If you're in a minivan or SUV or crossover, fifteen dollars. And then pickup trucks and full-size vans, twenty-two dollars. I always try to remind folks, if you have curbside services, and I believe you guys are still Republic, correct? Use your curbside services. It's usually a lot cheaper to buy an extra couple of garbage stickers than this to, a couple of lehends happen, I've been chewed out for this. How somebody show up in a pickup truck with two bags of garbage and they get charged twenty-two dollars. It's like, I only have two bags. I could have done this at home. They're like, yes, you can, please. So use those curbside services when you can. Special waste, this is something that's mostly industry-specific. That's going to go up to seventy per ton. We actually don't get a lot anymore because we're turning a lot of waste away because of our capacity issue. Bulky waste, these are things like railroad ties, telephone poles, we give a big load of those. Those are going to be eighty dollars per ton. And then commercial hazardous materials processing, that's going to see a five percent increase across the board. But that only affects a small amount of businesses. Residents will still be no charge. Wood waste down at our compost location near Czech Village, that's going to go up to thirty-two dollars per ton. Commercial finished compost will also be thirty-two per ton purchased, but residents can continue to get it for no charge. And then commercial recycling, this mostly affects the city of Marion and red sanitation that picks up for northern Lynn County. They're going to see the biggest increase. It's going to go to one hundred and fifteen dollars per ton, a fifteen-dollar increase. The big reason for that is recycling markets are still a little bit iffy and contamination being a big issue. So people always ask me, hey, does this really get recycled? So if it's a paper product, it's getting recycled. Cardboard, absolutely. Our biggest cardboard recycling in the U.S. is international paper right here in town. Most of the cardboard that we receive is going right over to them. Aluminum steel cans, absolutely, they're getting recycled. And again, it's plastics that are the issue. Plastics ones and twos, they get recycled. Three-through-sevens do not get recycled right now. There's just no markets for them. They take it down to the recycling facility, they sort everything out, they get bales of this material, and they can sell the ones and twos. People want ones and twos. Nobody wants three-through-sevens. They haven't for the past, you know, five to six years. So three-through-sevens get thrown away. Ones and twos are getting recycled.
Joe?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you give us examples of ones and twos versus the others?
Yeah, so ones and twos, milk jugs, monument detergent, tight containers, those are emptied out, pop cans, water bottles, those are all, those are all good. For the, a lot of things that meet a lot of fives, so like yogurt containers, those are fives, no markets for those. The take-home containers that you get from restaurants and things like that, a lot of those are fives, some of that. And then anything that's up, like a solo cup, those are usually sixes. Styrofoam, those are sixes. There's never a market for sixes. Now, when oil prices get really high and then the markets for fives come back, they have them for several years now, it's been, it's been low enough. So it's, ones and twos always, fives when it's really high, but nothing for three, four, six and seven. Republic Services is opening a big polymer plant over in the Anne area, so they say that the market for fives might come back in a couple of years, but you know, that's down the road. So keep, I always tell folks, if you want, if you want to recycle right, recycle your ones and twos, make sure they're empty, clean and dry, and that you know, you get a thing there.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Other recycling services that are going to stay the same, so if you're a resident coming out to see us, if you want to drop off your paper, plastic, cardboard and glass, you can do that for no charge out of the county home road location. Appliances are staying the same this year, ten dollars per unit. That's everything from washers and dryers, refrigerators, got no microwave. Scrap metal, no charge for scrap metal. Tires are staying the same, four dollars per tire, five if it's on the rim. Tires are the one we get the biggest pushback about, and we're really just the middleman when it comes to a lot of these things. If people drop it off to us, go somewhere else, there's one tire recycler for the entire Midwest, Liberty Tire out of Des Moines. And they tell us what the price is, that's the price that we have to charge, so that's where we're at right now with tires. Batteries and medical sharps, still no charge, you drop those off. And I know I've been here in past years and my wife's like, you know, batteries, if it's an alkaline household battery, go ahead and throw that away. Everything else bring to us. We're changing up our marketing on that because it's getting confusing to people. They're making alkalines now that have lithium ion in them, so lithium ion batteries that look like alkalines. And you know, we have one to two fires a week that start out in the landfill. Especially usually in kids' toys, they'll get run over by the dozer, the compactor, it cracks open, air hits the inside, it ignites and poosh, there's a little plume that goes up. So we have our staff, they spot it right away, they call out the water truck, they dig that area out and keep it isolated so we don't have any major fires, but it's a big concern. So now we're just telling everybody, if you have a battery, bring it to us and we'll take it for no charge. Don't put it in your curbside containers because that can cause issues at the recycling center, but if you bring it to us, we'll take all batteries, no charge, we'll sort them out once you get them there. Other services for recycling, TVs and monitors, that's staying the same. It's fifteen per unit regardless of size and weight. All other electronics we're taking for no charge. VCRs, stereos, vacuum cleaners, if you can plug it in and it's not appliance, we'll take it. And then household hazardous materials recycling, paints, chemical stain cleaners, we're getting a lot of lawn chemicals right now are coming in, things like that. So anytime we're open, drop those off, no charge, your hours are still the same, seven to four Monday through Friday, and then by appointment on Saturday. Some of the other services that we added in the last couple of years, our book recycling, still hardcover and softcover books, drop those off for no charge. CDs, VHS tapes and DVDs, I go check this out once a week just to see what people drop off. It's amazing, the amount of cassette tapes and VHS tapes that are still out there. You can leave them in the covers and the jewel boxes too, so we take all of those. Then textile recycling, I think one change we've had since the last time I was here, we used to partner with the organization out of the council bluffs area, and they stopped because it was too much of a drive for them, wasn't cost-effective. So now we partner with Saint Vincent de Paul in Cedar Rapids. They come out, they got the material once a week, and so they take it, they give it to people in need, they sell what they can in their stores, and what they can sell, they bundle up and they ship it to a textile recycling in the Chicago area. So it's keeping a lot of material out of the landfill. So that's been a good partnership. And a new service that we've added since I was here last year is a mattress recycling program. So if you bring a mattress to us at the landfill, it's going to cost you twenty dollars. And that's on top of the regular garbage fee. So if you're in a pickup truck, you got a bunch of garbage and a mattress, it's going to cost you twenty-two for the pickup, twenty for the mattress. The reason for that being is mattresses are super difficult to manage in the landfill. Our compactor weighs one hundred and fifteen thousand pounds. It goes over top of mattress, it's down, and it just starts to rise back up. So imagine that and love that would bring out thirty or forty mattresses at a time. So kind of a nightmare. So Willis Davy started a program to do mattress diversion. We partnered with them, so now if you take a mattress with Willis Davy, they only charge ten dollars, and then we give them another ten dollars to help the program. And they now have a full-time staff, I guess it was six, now they're up to eleven people who are taking apart mattresses. And you can see some of the pictures there, they're pulling out the foam, the cover, they pull up the metal, they have markets for all of it. So it's saving us landfill space, it's creating jobs for their clients. Even though Willis Davy, they're giving jobs to homeless people. So it's been a great program. They diverted over four hundred last year's pilot programs, they're hoping to more than double that this year. They just got a big grant to improve their operations, add a loading dock, so we're hoping this will be a big success. It's the only recycling operation in the state of Iowa right now for mattresses. So it's been a great program. And another partnership that we have with, for diversion is with Central Furniture Rescue. They help people who are emerging from homelessness and housing for the first time furnish their homes. You know, think about that, if you've never had anything, you don't have chairs, you don't have tables, you don't have a couch. So our staff, when they're at the landfill, at our residential disposal area, if they'll see somebody pull up in a small trailer or pickup, and they might have it full of garbage, but they have one good chair that they don't want anymore, but somebody else might, so they're like, hey, do you mind? And you've staged a couple of containers that Central Furniture Rescue gave us, like, would you mind dropping that off over there? So about once every two weeks, they're pulling up these big twenty-yard containers, and they're taking it down there, they refer them, and then they're helping new families out. So this is converting tens of tons of material each month too, so also a great program. Moving down to our compost location by Czech Village, Mount Trashmore is back open, the walking trails. The Mount Trashmore Challenge is back up this year. We've already had a record amount of people sign up for it. That's going up and down Mount Trashmore one hundred and forty times, which is the equivalent of scaling Mount Everest. So it's a great view up there, encourage those to check it out. Our, the compost location, we do have screened compost right now, we've been running out, but we keep trying to screen as much as we can when the weather propulates. So residents can get screened compost for no charge. If the community needs any, let us know, we'll also get that to Mount Earth for no charge. And we also have wood chips. And so wood chips, great for stormwater management. We have double ground and one scrounged wood chips, either of those. And for businesses, we're having to charge again, we had, we used to charge forty dollars per ton for wood chips, which was great, like, you know, those bags that you get at Home Depot that cost four or five dollars a bag? It worked out to like thirty-eight cents a bag. After the derecho, we stopped charging because we had a big supply of wood chips. We've gotten to a point, five years later, where we've gotten those numbers down pretty good. So we're still giving them away for free to residents, but now businesses have to buy the double ground wood chips once again. So moving on to the last slide there, landfill capacity, was the future of that, we were just talking about a little bit before the meeting. You can see that picture there, phases one through five A, that's the current active area of the landfill that we're using. And we get five hundred to six hundred tons of garbage every single day coming in from Lynn County. So we're having a plan for our final phase, phase five B, that area down there in gold, just a little bit green. That's going to be the last section of landfill that we're permitted to construct because we have that settlement agreement with the city of Marion. Our settlement agreement with Marion says our southern boundary will be eighteen hundred feet back from the southern end of our property. D and R regulations say you only have to be fifty feet back. And when they initially had this agreement back in the early two thousands, when the landfill, Mount Trashmore was filling up, county home road was filling up, and they were looking at citing potentially different landfills. And that was before I was there, and I'm sure some of you remember, it's a pretty contentious issue. Everyone creates garbage, nobody wants a landfill near them. And once, we went to expand this location, there was litigation with Marion, and the settlement agreement ended all that, and they're like, okay, you guys can stay there, but you have to end when your charges in the agency are twenty-eight E ends, June three to twenty forty-four. So they're like, everything out of that location has to end as well. Well, I think is, we now at this point, we're going to be full before twenty forty-four. If you remember last year, we had, it was like, it's probably going to be twenty thirty-six. Now, our update, it looks like February twenty thirty-seven landfill will be full. We've got a year of airspace back. And that's going to fluctuate, and I might be back here next year like, hey, it's going to be twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-six. It'll move around, but we're not going to get seven years of airspace back. So when county home road fills up, we're going to operate out there until June three to twenty forty-four as a transfer station. So the garbage will still come in, but instead of getting buried, it will get dropped off. We'll probably expand our recycling building on the other side of it where we don't take the recycling. And the garbage will be dropped on that side, we'll load it into open-top semis, and they'll get taken out to either to a landfill that has space, or if there's another option at that point, we'll take it there. Bad news about that is transfers are the cheapest option after landfilling, but if we're going to do everything the same, our natural waste program, so we subsidize apples to apples, the tipping fee isn't going to be fifty dollars per ton if we were doing this now as transfer, it'd be like ninety, ninety-five dollars per ton. It's a lot more expensive. All the other alternatives that we looked at, and there are different things that you can do besides landfilling and transferring with incinerators and mixed waste processing, different things, they all are great, they sound great, they're just really expensive. And so it's like, hey, if we pay fifty dollars per ton, or we're going to have to charge you two hundred dollars a ton to do an incinerator, things like that, we just don't generate enough garbage, so I mean, those other things are cost-effective for economies of scale. So that's where we're at. So I gave this presentation to Marion earlier in the spring, and at that time they formed a subcommittee because our settlement agreement, Marion has all the power in this situation, there is room there. So if we could use the D and R regulations of having a fifty-foot setback, we have, we have space out there at current rates until twenty sixty-six. So instead of filling up in twenty, we don't have another thirty years of space. But when we asked informally about three years ago if they would consider allowing us to expand then, they said no, which is their right, we signed that settlement agreement in good faith too. But at this point, with designing the last phase, that phase five B, the design plans have to start by the end of this year. The reason for that being, if we know that eighteen hundred foot is the final setback, they designed it a certain way, but if we know that we can expand it, we design it a different way. But if you design it knowing that's the end of it, that's space that you can never get back. So we have to know by the end of this year. So we'd ask them, is there any possibility at all? We haven't got an official response yet. So hopefully by the end of this year, we'll know if there's any chance that we can use the space there, because the site will always just be a landfill. So we've always like, put it to its highest and best use before we have to go to transfer. So we're waiting to hear on that. So if you have any sway with the city of Marion, you want to say, hey, do this for everybody, but you know, we'll leave it at that. So that, in the meantime though, we want folks to know, even as we're getting closer there, we're still open, we're still offering all these different services and programs because we want to preserve the space, because at the end of the day, there's some things that you can't recycle, you can't reuse it, you can't compost it, it has to be landfillled. And we don't know when the next derecho two-point-oh or the plus of oh eight is going to happen again, so we want to have that space, because if we don't have that, it's going to be a lot harder to respond to a national disaster. But in the meantime, we're going to keep operating there, and if I get updates on these situations with Marion, I'll make sure I let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks for continually educating us. We appreciate it.
Thanks, much pleasure.
Thank you. Well done.
Did a tour with, I was invited by Joe Jensen to take a tour of the sites by Hawkeye Downs, South West Cedar Rapids, where recycling happens with Republic. And that was very interesting, just one component of this, but there's a lot going on there, and you've got to be paying attention and watch your hands. Thank you, Joe. Next item is consent agenda. We've got one item, and that's the minutes from the last meeting.
Do you have consent agenda?
Call. Mark, moving second to approve the consent agenda, one item. All in favor, the motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think we're skipping, moving on to G two, I believe. Resolution six to ten twenty-five B, according to bank agent, note registrar and transfer agents, approving the bank agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, authorizing the execution of the agreement.
These two resolutions are in reference to the two point five million dollar violation approved. This is the necessary paperwork that is required to establish U M Bs out of all the measures between one and the second resolution and the actual law agreement.
So that's number three.
Correct.
I would move approval of resolution six dash two dash twenty twenty-five B to the two million five hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Moving second to approve six to twenty twenty-five B. And are there any questions for staff operating the book on that? This is a vote call vote. If you have any question.
Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
That resolution passes. That's six to twenty twenty-five C, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and operating and providing for issuance and levying a tax to pay the notes. Fill in the tax and tax certificate and continuing disclosure certificate. J three, anything you could add?
I remove approval of resolution six dash two dash twenty twenty-five C for the two point five million dollars.
I'll second it. To move forth, six to twenty twenty-five C. Comments or questions to or from staff? Otherwise, ready for a vote call vote. Marshall?
Angel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Next is six to twenty twenty-five P, according construction of certain improvements, period of military plans and fixing a date hearing. Take a bid, therefore, for improvements known as the twenty twenty-five Rachel Street infrastructure improvements.
Public hearing would be on sixteenth, bid would be due by the twenty-sixth, and then the awarding of bid would be July seventh.
See activity down there with Plaza getting the fence down, getting a new fence up and getting, sorry, I'm getting the old fence down. So this is kind of the next step for the street. Questions for staff about that?
Does the street have to go in before they start working on the construction?
I would move approval of resolution six to twenty twenty-five D, approving the, setting the public hearing date for the Rachel Street infrastructure project.
Scott?
I'll second it.
Mark? Moving second to move forth, six to twenty twenty-five D. And any comments or questions from staff? Two staff? Otherwise, it's a vote call vote. If you have any question.
Rose?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Resolution passes. And we're one step closer. I think we've been through, I think this process for about seven years now, so.
About half a year, I think.
Next is resolution six to twenty twenty-five E, accepting work for the project known as Next is Resolution 6-2-2025E, accepting work for the project known as the Glenn Street Extension Project for Gracie Construction Company.
Full contract price ended up being $907,244.44 after the 30-day waiting period, the containment of $45,362.22 period.
House, questions?
I would move approval of Resolution 6-2-2025E, the study of education for the Glenn Street Extension Project.
Second.
Let's move to second to move forward to the 6-2-2025B. And there are no comments or questions or any vote on that one?
Tyler.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Page one. Next is mayor proclamation. Beginning the month of June, and as we've done past years, made a point out of mayor proclamation, as the agenda says, proclamation recognizing and proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month, supporting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer communities. And I will read that for the record right now. Whereas the mayor of Mount Vernon recognizes and proclaims the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer Pride Month throughout the city of Mount Vernon. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ+ people in society. And whereas all humans are, beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ+ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic and economic successes of our country. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity. Whereas the city of Mount Vernon is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our diverse, diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principles that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the LGBTQ+ community calls upon the people of the city of Mount Vernon to embrace this principle, to work to eliminate prejudice everywhere exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the city of Mount Vernon's LGBTQ+ community, and is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue, strengthen alliances, build acceptance and advance equal rights. Now therefore, we have resolved that I, Thomas and Weisner, the mayor of the city of Mount Vernon, give recognition the month of June as Pride Month and support as LGBTQ+ community, and that is dated the second day of June, and I will sign the official documents soon. So, thank you very much. And thank you for attending for the proclamation. Any comments, public comments, for on this agenda topic?
Yes, sir. I think that this is very important. And I think what we've done for other, the other flags and recognition we've done, we just had another incident in Boulder where a community was singled out and violent. And I'm proud to be part of the city council that supports marginalized communities, whatever the difference is. We are more of the same than we are big. Thank you.
I'll say Paul. I would just say that this is still Mount Vernon. Moving to motions for approval, we've got a claims list that Marsha sent out this afternoon.
Spent some money this month.
Yeah, welcome to the first meeting of January.
Our questions to Marsha here.
Put Marsha on our marketing board.
I will move to first place.
Okay, thanks. Second. Well, Stephanie and Craig, we've decided to approve the claims list as presented. Thank you, Marsha. And ready to vote on that by voice, vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of setting a public hearing date to amend Chapter 99.02 sewer service charges. Council actions is needed.
Be setting a date for June 16th. Start the process of the moment and consider space differences in the sewer.
I would move setting the public hearing date for sanitary sewer rigs for June 16th.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Scotty. Second to set June 16th for the public hearing date, discussing sewer service charges. And if there are further questions of staff or why we're, why we're here, ready to vote on that. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next is discussion, consideration of change order number one of the uptown streetlight project.
The full basis had to increase from 24 inches to 30 inches. And I'm sure you're quite aware by the fact that there's many of the lights up that we aren't going to make that change. So the change order was in the amount of $15,527.10.44. Really kind of falls back to the line. Make the, feel like I'm pushing it, gets worse under, but maybe some last minute changes that require the very full basis, so.
This was a surprise.
Yes.
They're still in on this to the $2,000, right?
Yeah.
The total cost benefit ratio is still in our favor.
Two to one.
I remove approval of change order number one to the uptown streetlights in the amount of $15,527.10.44. Craig, second. Mark. Moving second to move forward with that change order number one of the uptown streetlights. Voice votes. Ready to vote on it. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is discussion, consideration request for qualifications for our federal services for community development, block grant, downtown regional utilization project. Has presentations on this before? Tom, I see Adam.
Yeah, Tom Drew has prepared the request for qualifications for us for that project so that meets the standards required by the feds as it relates to that particular grant earlier and so on.
And they still, I can't remember the number from last month, was it 11 businesses?
Eleven businesses, 11 to 13 businesses had interest.
Oh, and they needed like six or seven or something like that. And that's still the case?
As of today, yes.
Good.
I appreciated the visual.
I do, I do actually feel Shepleys was, was included in that because they could use it in the society.
Yeah, I was talking to Katrina about the.
Take what we can get.
Yeah.
I think the area is appropriate. With that said, I will move approval of the request for qualifications for the community development grant, that block grant, downtown redevelopment stage.
I'll second.
Paul and Stephanie. Move to second to get the process started. Our queue for our technical services. Any other comments or questions? If we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That motion carries. Next is J O, J O invoice 161170 of the uptown streetscape project.
The invoice is in the amount of $26,809. We provided a monthly progress report on where the project actually stands today. Passionate of the progress of that.
I move approval of J O invoice number 161170 in the amount of $26,809.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Second.
Move to second to move forward with J O invoice for the uptown streetscape project. Any further comments or questions? If you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next is V K invoice for the Rachel Street infrastructure improvements. $14,000.
$14,362.10. This will be repaid with the amount once the money gets acquired from the city.
So basically, we fronted the money.
Correct.
Okay. I would move approval of the V K invoice number 51378 for the Rachel Street infrastructure, $14,362.10.
Second. Third, Paul. Okay. Let's move to second to move forward with the Rachel Street infrastructure, V K invoice. If there are no further comments, if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next is discussion, consideration of Iowa traffic engineering assistance program. There's a question about that, that relationship and financing of that, that's foolish at the time. And I hope everybody got involved with that conversation, but do you want to repeat that answer?
So this program, the T program is limited to cities and counties. So the request is for the city to be believed on the application received 150 hours, but it would be at zero cost to the city. So a simple vote in favor of allowing Chi Hader to submit for the T funding would suffice. Again, this would be for the traffic study in and around school and either related to access.
Has that already started?
Yes.
With that, I would move approval of the traffic engineering assistance program with the city of Mount Vernon's function application.
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul.
And just to confirm, when we talk about the access, is this looking at finding another reasonable route into the campus? Is that essentially the goal here?
One of them, yes.
Or possible system change with, you know.
Traffic flow.
Sure. With some other way to.
Starting high school, 50 minutes after.
Very much needed.
Well, Craig's question, I think the meters are down, the actual visual units, computers with information base, those are down, but coming up with consensus results of what they produced is.
You mean speed cameras, Tom? That's the first thing that went out on Facebook. Watch out, there's speed cameras up.
And the stop signs.
That's awesome.
I used to start with this camera.
I don't see a problem.
Of the various things that people put out on Facebook, that seems the least dangerous.
I worked as a new chief. It's a new sheriff in town, right? They could still be the one with this one. If there are no other comments serious about it, this is a voice vote. And we have a vote in a second. If we're ready to vote on that motion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Special consideration of the application number four of the 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
This invoice is in the amount of $67,049.48. This project is almost complete. This will be the funding that the city receives through Lynn County Art Program.
I would move approval of pay application number four for 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation in the amount of $67,049.48.
Second, Paul and Craig. Move to second to move forward with that pay application number four. And if there are no further comments or questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next is special consideration for the purchases from Mount Vernon, with the police department.
This will actually take place after July 1 in the next fiscal year, but one to get approval of just under $10,000 with the computer purchases. Just so you know, the server out of PD will have to be replaced next fiscal year as well, too. But this will allow them to get the project moving, so we're not, not a huge lapse.
Questions about the quantity and that grade? Iowa Solutions has been our contractor for quite a while. I've never checked with that.
Unless there are questions or concerns, I would move approval of the computer purchase proposal for PD in the amount of $800.
Thank you, Scott. And is there a second?
Just a question, wasn't there a comment about the services added to that? So there's the hardware and wasn't there a separate cost?
Are those two separate? Okay, then I would amend to include the service total of $778.18.
Please call.
Yes.
Second. Catch all that? That amended that motion here. We've got a consideration of computer purchases for the police department. If we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. I'm ten, discussion consideration of change order number nine, pool improvements and a salt pump.
Change orders in the amount of $5,041.36. There is a, basically like a French drain opening and a slide pit. The amount saturates and occurs around the pool more than what they thought. So we're currently running a temporary salt pump out of that. This will be a permanent replacement.
Is any of this going to change the amount of water that's running out in between there and the waste pump field? I walked through the other day and it was pretty squishy.
It is pretty squishy and it will always be squishy. So the issue is, it's a fine balance between the amount of water that saturates the bowl and makes its way into the drainage system. So when that, believe it or not, when that valve is open, there's a significant amount of water that makes its way into the tiling. So we ratchet that back and we'll continue to mess with that over the summer. It's something that we do every year to try to avoid too much water over there, but at the same time, not have a full bore and consistently trying to pump water into the pool. So, you know, that's one of the challenges that we'll continue to face with this. It looks great, puts some money into it, but the base itself, that basin itself is still the same pool. And we'll have to continue to do some work.
What it means is, it appears the valve field is far enough away and there's.
It is. And we keep a close eye on.
So, yeah.
My, my wonderful son reminds me all the time because he's milking it.
It's a natural splash.
Whether or not it's, it's, it's pressure, so they love it because they have to get out and reback that to the actual mill.
Well, with that, I would move approval of change order number nine for the pool improvements in the amount of $5,041.36.
I'll second.
Scott and Stephanie. Hold vote. All right.
Hold.
Motion on the floor to approve change number nine on pool improvements. If we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. And J L is discussing consideration of D and T invoice. They are working with our historic preservation group. I would be the HPC design guy.
I would move approval of J and T invoice to that 260549 in the amount of $2,301.44.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Paul Mark. Move to second to move forward for J and T invoice presented. And if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That motion carries. J 12, discussion consideration of the application number four for the Glenn Street Extension.
This is the rehange that was discussed earlier when we approved the resolution.
So we approve now and then.
Thirty days. Holding till the end of January.
I would move approval of pay application number four for the Glenn Street Extension in the amount of $35,362.22.
For a second.
And Stephanie, Paul and Stephanie. Motion on the floor to approve that pay application for the Glenn Street Extension. And if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next is pay application number four. Yeah, pay application rain on pool improvements.
So eight is in the amount of $429,927.65. And then nine, shortly thereafter, is $106,658.14.
Probably activities in Ben Ray's, so first one for the eight.
I would move to approve pay application number four in the amount of $429,927.65. That petition would be. Oh, sorry.
I will second.
Thanks for catching that. So pay application eight, that's Stephanie and Scott here. Motion on the floor to approve the application number eight. If we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Carries.
Move approval of pay application number nine in the amount of $106,658.14.
I'll second.
Paul and Mark. Move to second to move forward with the application number nine of the pool improvements. If we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Reports, discussion items, reports of mayor, council administrator. Mayor's report, but the only thing I mentioned is that I'm trying to get together a meeting on Bryant Road, Trail slash Prairie, out on the northwest corner of town. This is part of the Academy acreage from four, five months ago. So I'm trying to get something to go in towards the afternoon. So we'll see if we get all the parties there. And as I'll mention, that I'm not going to be able to be here for Heritage Day, because parents of the goddaughter's wedding, six hours away at one o'clock afternoon. But Councilman Rose has taken over our responsibilities that weekend. So thank you, Scott, for that.
I'm quite excited.
Duty.
Really?
Duty. It's duty, duty.
You'll be the most popular person to confront, guaranteed, if you're in the race.
I'll get plenty of pictures.
That's all I have for mayor's report. Council reports. Anybody? Any remarks? The administrator's report.
So I've been. He shouldn't trust me to put the papers together.
It didn't end in Brooklyn.
It did. Yeah, that was my fault.
Where were Eldon's words?
Hey, I had nothing to do with that. The city of those reports, I'll take full responsibility.
I didn't really have anything. I was out of the office. I found him at Evans Avenue for a few years, started in the modus operandi. But the only thing that I would share is that CDG has hired their intern, Ellen Hart, joining Jesse for the summer.
She was kind of long.
I know, right? I know, right? So, yeah, looking forward to it. I do have a meeting next week with the mayor, but the incoming of the CDG, so.
Who's that?
We're sure. Two thousand four grad.
Looking forward to kickstarting that conversation on a new.
I'm attending Clark's School next week from Monday through Thursday. She's attending the Academy Wednesday, Monday through Wednesday. So we will be gone. Chris is like, thank God.
What are you doing at school week for you?
I'm so close, I'm so close to being done.
And thanks to the pool staff for the beginning of season opening, after remodel, during remodel, put remodel between pool staff, Katie Doris, and the city staff, spending a lot of time down there.
It's not a good weekend.
Long evenings.
If you'll bear with me for just a minute, I'll give you an update on that, although it'll save me an email tomorrow. So, Friday, I want to say close to ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, maybe somewhere around there, I received a phone call that the very slide pit that we discussed some pump on, it has a GFI on the actual cord plug-in to it while it had kicked off and nobody had noticed. So the pump was submerged in the pit itself by about four feet of water. Thankfully, I cannot say enough about Jacob Cannon. For a young man working at a pool, he does a phenomenal job and is super intelligent, but he was there, so I met with him and, you know, he shut the pump off right away. We were able to do some things with water, how it's filed there. We noticed that we were having some other issues going on, we've had trouble shot throughout. So about one o'clock, I left and we had thoughts that we had everything ready to go. Received another phone call at about seven in the morning on Saturday. The heat pumps at all basically shut off and both of the other pumps had tripped. Long story short, we didn't have GFI breakers on all of our equipment over there previously. We do now. But what ended up happening, and I didn't realize this until like at home, is that the north side of town actually had a power leak at about four o'clock in the morning. Wasn't very long, and I don't know that unless you had something on an appliance kick off, you wouldn't even know that it happened. So I did talk to Cleba on Saturday kind of mid-afternoon, and he did say that all seven of the pumps will trip if there's a power failure. And that is to prevent the pumps from burning themselves up. All good news. We were there at about eight o'clock. So there's two things that have to be turned on though when it comes to the heat. There's kind of a master control panel that will turn the system on, but each individual unit, and there's seven, has its own smart board that has to be turned on individually as well. So the heat was not running until about eight-thirty, and the water essentially got down to like seventy-two. Consequently, I was there today and they were up to eighty-two, so the new heater is working. But I do foresee us battling some of these things. On a bright note, I was there today and I don't know that I've ever seen that many cars on like the first day of summer ever.
It was.
Yeah, it was incredible.
I know that Brian was cool on Sunday and we got so many compliments and you just always features a lot of compliments.
So Chris, is this a matter of a process switch that we need to just make it?
Yeah, I mean, we still are losing water, which was to be extracted, continue to troubleshoot that. We're going to do another fix, so try to really condense this very. There is a pit that the water goes in, that pumps into the pool, and that's how we fill it. Got a two-inch line and then a much smaller line that is supposed to kind of keep up with the water loss, but it doesn't. And then there's another pit right next to it that is, when we open a valve, it's fed and it pumps out. So when we drain the pool, the second pit, which is, how we make that happen? There's a leak in the pipe between the two pits, it's probably that long. So we're constantly pumping water out of the pool with that leaky pipe. So we're going to try and fix that, we'll attempt to do that after hours.
I've got some points.
Well, to a certain extent, that's what we get used, it is a, it is a chrome sealant designed to be submerged. So, just, just little things like that, the chairs were backordered until July one, which is unfortunate. We are allowing people to bring their own chairs until we get them.
We did put signs up to let people know, I made a bunch of signs as we get them. Yeah, just to let them know the chairs are coming, more renovations will be done soon.
That's good. We had a small issue with the chlorinator, that wasn't part of the pool renovations. It was a valve that was faulty, so we've got that fixed. A little, like I said, a little troubleshooting here and there, we expected, but.
Couple more weeks of picket tables?
They're supposed to be this week.
This week, okay.
Well, I still consider it a huge success that we opened when we did, given what we were dealing with with weather issues for a while.
And like I said, everybody seemed pretty happy. Kids were like hanging on offense, ready to get in there, so.
Awesome.
Three days with no glass incidents, and hopefully come out of it. And now it's fixed, I know. But now we're changed.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you don't tie to the pitcher in the ninth inning. Come on!
Thanks for that update, I hope you sent your whole, long email explanation. Any else that needs to come in for this council? Although we are adjourned, thank you very much.
We are. Chat's on the battery. I don't know.